All right, welcome everybody. To again, a little bit of a special service levy town hall sort of repeat. Our encore presentation, so I appreciate everybody being here tonight. Again, we're at we're located tonight and we're having this on 35 territories, so like always, we'd like to recognize and. Appreciate the thanks to our neighbors, O'Passory, Cree Nation and all the other indigenous people were allowing us to be part of their land and definitely part of their. And so, so with that, I'm just gonna quickly go through sort of the plan here tonight. Just gonna sort of go through a couple of the items. We're gonna sort of explain the special service line, we're not gonna spend as much time as we did the last time because. I think we'll try to highlight some of the changes that were done and sort of what the impacts of those changes are. And again, we've had many, many discussions with with our administration and with council. And we think we're getting closer, but we're always open and to hearing more from what you have to say as well. And then we'll kind of go through the timelines of what's happened, so even though today we end up where we're at. There's still a bunch of other things that has to take place. And then have a little bit of open and question period. And then we hope that we hope that will like within an hour, I think we should be done, but if anybody wants to chat in chat, we're always open to discussing. So as I mentioned, it's really about discussing the special service levy, how it works. And what sort of the impact and how this how we're gonna distribute costs. The thing we're talking about is the RCMP cost, so just so people understand, council has spent many, many, many hours advocating with the provincial federal governments. To try to level the RCMP process that's applied to our municipality. We how we get allocated or invoiced for costs. We have a policing agreement and we're one of the municipalities and there's other municipalities of Manitoba as well as in Canada. That's kind of outdated and so. Although we would like to say that there needs to be a modernized RCMP model, which I know AMM Association of Manitoba municipalities. Is used our information to advocate a federal level where we're at where we are today. And so this year's budget is at three point two million dollars. If you kind of remember last time, it was pretty, it was a lot higher. We 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 went more conservative with this number and brought it back down because we looked at the vacancies and what we had got invoiced in the last year. We thought like, let's be a little bit more conservative and if we miss the mark. Also, what happens is that that difference just goes to general taxation and then just everybody will share the cost of it, so. We're doing our best guess of what we think it is. So the reason why we talked about and and I don't want to peep myself because I look around the room, most of you are here already, but you know, we believe. That this is a more fair, transparent, predictive way to fund police. And really, as today's policing's costs. Are are like in 2025, how the taxation works, it goes on general assessment. And then based on your assessment value, that also depends on how much you're gonna pay for policing because it's just built into the general bill break. And so what we what we're proposing as a council is to. Look at other, we looked at other opportunities or other ways that we can sort of distribute the cost because we're thinking about. Fair costs. Or fair service or equal service. Everybody should be sort of paying the same for equal service, I know it's not as that simple, but this is a common. Way that municipalities will do across all sorts of expenses such as garbage collections, snow removal, landfill expenses. You know, and you actually have some special service levies, although the debentures today, when you look at your debentures, it's really like a special service levy. So um. This is a little sort of background again, I won't spend a bunch of time on it, but remember mill rate. Is generated by taking the municipal budget. And then we get from the assessment branch, we get how much the municipality is worth. And they give us, we generate a number, that's where you see today, it's fifty seven point eight six seven or six, seven, eight or something around those lines. So that's how that number got generated for our municipality. We've taken all the expenses that we believe. We're gonna be needed to operate the municipality and that it also includes. Not only RCMP cost, it also includes school tax, school costs, all that sort of stuff. And we create this number and then what happens is that for residential property, we take a forty point forty five percent value of that or sixty five percent value for. For commercial. And we generate how much your taxes are, so if you look at that, if you plugged your number in there. Your assessed value of your home was two hundred thousand dollars. You put it in there, divide it by thousand, multiply it by whatever the mill rate is or wherever you are at. And then multiply it by forty five percent and that's what you get, that's what the municipality is gonna allocate towards taxes. Now, there's other things that happen. There's other things that will happen that you may get a rebate through the school tax program and all that other stuff, but that's separate to what the municipality does. One of the things you can say this year is that this council really looked at and with our administration really looked hard at the tax rate that we were. Or expenses this year and tried to be real or realistic about those things that we thought we were gonna accomplish and we actually kept our mill rate. Actually, I think our tax increase was a negative for. Business by like one mill or something or point six mills and it was like point zero one three increase for. For residential, but then I've heard people say, oh, my taxes went up. Well, your taxes likely went up because your house got your home got reassessed through the reassessment branch last year and because your assessment changed. Sort of what we're talking about today, your assessment changes. Uh, you actually then multiply. Your number gets bigger. It multiplies against the same mill rate and you pay more taxes, that's sort of how it works. And and one of the things that we're hoping to address a little bit as with special service studies. Please stop me or council, anybody wants to jump in, just jump in.
I just have something perfect, I answered that, there's also something that's called border revision. When it comes to your assessment, if you're not happy with it, you don't apply to have that.
Yeah. And just for viewing land there, as councillor Atkinson reminded everybody that if you do get an assessment and it's and you're not in agreement with your assessment. There is a process called the border revision where you can apply to the border revision. And have your have them relook at that assessment based on whatever criteria you bring to the table.
So this for the product we shown, we advertise it by October, please stay on the newspaper. I will put this on the Facebook as you want.
So as we mentioned and we've talked about it, you know, we know. As your property value assessment changes, you actually have to pay more. And that's sort of looking at your assessed value over the last while is that. People maybe will be avoiding improvements, they don't want to put on a debt, they don't want to build a garage. Whatever it happens to be, because any permanent structure when they come behind to do a reassessment, actually increases the value of your home. It increases the assessed value of your home, which then in turn increases your taxes. And it gets applied against the general entire budget of taxation. Also, this year, just for information, this year's budget. For our town with a with a mill rate of fifty seven point six eight seven was twelve point eight million dollars. So what is a special service levy, so really a special service levy is just another tax tool or one of the tax tools and we're in Manitoba, we're kind of limited. So if you go to Saskatchewan, they have a really, their their government has a lot more. Uh, gives municipalities a lot more autonomy and how they actually, how they actually. Provide some tax or collect taxation within the municipality, such as being able to put in flat fees, put in. Fees that on development, whatever it happens to be, but there's. There's multiple one, I know my friend in the in the audience has been advocating abroad for this for many years. I've taken the I've taken the torch and I've been doing it, one of the things is is it is in front of, it is in front of on the top priority now with AMM. And I wish back over the next few years. You may see some changes which will allow municipalities to do the right thing, what they think is right. So what a special service levy really does is and without reading all the words there, is it, it takes. Whatever cost you decide that you want to apply a special service levy, in our case, we're doing RCMP cost. And that's three point two million dollars, but you can also apply it to. Snow removal, landfill, fire, you know, protective services, whatever it happens to be, you can bundle whatever you want. So our community decided to pick the RCMP cost, which is three point two, and what it does is it says, it takes the RCMP cost and it says. I have to distribute this to all these role numbers now. But what the municipality, you think about all the role numbers, we have business, we have vacant lots, you got. Churches, which are exempt properties, we got residential properties, we have all those things, so what apartment buildings. All those things, so what the council discussed has said, well, how do we make sure that we're doing the right thing? So they carved out and said, well, businesses. And or commercial and apartment buildings, those buildings that have three units or more, we're gonna leave them on assessed value. So we'll leave them being assessed as they always be assessed. And so when you look at that, you say, okay, well, how much money does that generate? To be applied to the RCMP cost, so when you look at that. When we did the calculation, so if you take the three point two million dollars, that's equivalent to fifteen point zero seven seven bills. So you apply it to that group and then generates about four point. Or five or four, six million dollars or one point four six million dollars. So now you have one point four six million dollars of money that's there, that's been paid for. And now what you're saying, well, let's take the next seven or what does I write down, one point seven million dollars. And let's apply that to residential outside of that, so we take sixteen hundred and fifty properties, right? That's how many properties, we're not including, now we haven't put in. Vacant lots because we've identified maybe there's some concerns on the on the definition of vacant. Uh, so we pulled those out, we we heard what the churches were saying and and the impact that has, so we pulled that out. We said exempt properties, we need to relook at that. So when we did that. We applied it to sixteen hundred and fifty properties. And sixteen hundred and fifty role numbers, that means that the sixteen hundred and fifty tax pairs. Or rate pairs, however we want to say it, are now gonna pay equally to make up that one point seven dollar. So this is what it looks like, so when we do all that. Uh, the number you get is a thousand and fifty six dollars, thereabouts, might change a little bit like. But again, this is gonna be applied to twenty twenty six. And you don't have to take notes, we're gonna put this online, everybody can see whether it is, so. What it does, so what people have to realize though is, remember I said. The municipal budget is twelve point eight million dollars. And it's made up of a whole bunch of things, like we take three point six million of that, send it to the schools. We have three point two million, we apply it to RCMP, all those types of things, when we, what we did is. As a special service levy is all we've done is taken that three point two million dollars. Moved it out of the twelve point eight. Divided it all up, so everybody else is paying that separately. So it's not a new tax, so I hear people saying, we're paying a new tax, we're paying a new tax, it's not, it's not increasing taxation. You're gonna earn twelve point eight million dollars, so Roy just so, so you have to think of it as that our budget is twelve point eight million. Right, that's what we generate, that's what we need to operate the municipality. Out of that twelve point eight million dollars, we're taking three point two million of it. And we're gonna apply a special service levy to. To generate three point two million dollars. When you do that. If you look at the twelve point eight. And you'll see. Is that the mill rate we had at fifty seven point six eight seven, which is the mill rate for twelve point eight million dollars. But the remaining money that's left over now because we've special service levy, the RCMP cost, the new mill rate. Which is what you would apply to your assessed value is forty two point six one zero. So what does that mean to everybody, so what that means is that I'm now living in my home. And I'm gonna go and add. A fifty sixty thousand dollar garage. And it adds sixty thousand dollars of value. And I'm gonna get reassessed on that. For sure, I'm gonna get reassessed because the assessment branch is gonna come through every couple of years, they're gonna fly their things all around whatever they do. Or they're gonna pick it up on my building permit, right, because everybody here that built something gets a building permit supposedly. And then and then what we do is they're gonna come and reassess that and they're gonna say, oh, your homes now were two hundred now, your homes were three hundred. Thousand. So I'm gonna find my assessed value to three hundred, but I'm not gonna apply it against fifty seven point six eight seven, I'm gonna apply that three hundred against forty two point six one zero. So the multiplier for my new tax will be lower based on the upgrade that I did. Everybody understand. They don't understand, please ask, because I'm perfectly not the best person always to explain, but. I I I probably don't even understand it, I'm the type to be like. So again, what we're doing is taking a pot of money. Which is the twenty twenty five budget. Twelve point eight million dollars. And the and today in twenty twenty five. Everybody gets to make up that twelve point eight million dollars. We generated a mill rate of fifty seven point six eight seven. We apply it to everybody's home exactly the same. So that fifty thousand dollar home, that three hundred thousand dollar home. They all get applied the same, it's multiplied up, everybody pays different rate of taxes. Just keep in mind, the special service levy doesn't get to down, pay more money, no. Being able to say that, yeah. Exactly right, it's not generating any additional money. Made, so I'll just go to the next one, so here's where really the sort of the tires hit the ground here. So when you think about this. When you think about this and the and the one in yellow there is highlighted as sort of the tipping point. And a tipping point means that if you are at, if your assessed value of your home is at a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, you will see no change. There'll be no changes in your taxation, you'll get applied a special service levy. But what you will see though is that if you decide to build that hundred thousand dollar garage. Your assessed value when it changes will not be. Your taxes won't be as impacted as much because you would have a lower general assessed bill rate. So if you think. You know, on this chart, who's who's gonna be negatively impacted most? And I think we showed this the last time and and when we showed this the last time. I think the number was around one twenty or or ninety nine or I can't remember now. But what's changed here is when we removed. Churches, when we removed exempt properties, all that, we removed about three hundred thousand dollars, vacant lots. We removed about three hundred thousand dollars in taxation. Based on the general service study. So. We they are only now, there's continuing to pay their general assessments and the way they've always done it. But they don't generate as as much money. And there's a couple of big ones in there and this is where council really struggles, you know, we have, you know, it's the school division, the school division. If we went through with a special service levy with them and and or left them in here as non-exempt and take them away from the way we would do it today. There would be a hundred thousand plus here, the hospitals, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's a couple of big numbers, I think council is committed to continue to look at those type of things because. They still are using the services and all that. So when you look at this, their fifty thousand dollar home. Your portion assessments, that's the forty five percent, right? Is that, so today they're paying taxes of twelve hundred and ninety dollars. Don't think of the school tax, school rebate. Under a new way of doing it and it says new twenty twenty five, but it's actually new twenty twenty six, this is how it would look. Because your mill rate now on general on the general dollars that are left as a budget is lower, you pay less in the lower amount. So your taxes would be decreased. But then everybody's chipping in for RCMP costs the same now. So now they're paying more. And you can see that their new tax would be seven hundred, their their new tax would be two thousand dollars a month or a year. So that increases by about seven hundred bucks. And if you look at the other side of it, so I I building a building or I have a new home. And and I it's worth three hundred thousand dollars. And today I'm paying seventy eight hundred dollars almost for my taxation based on the way it is today. But then if I had a special service levy today, my general taxation would go down to fifty seven. Then I have to pay the special service levy just like everybody else. So my overall taxes is six sixty eight hundred dollars and I would see a decrease in my taxes by nine hundred and seventy five dollars. So if you you look at this chart and you're trying to wonder, where am I landing on that? This is sort of a way where you can kind of just get a ballpark idea where you're at. So I know we were talking earlier with somebody's, they thought that their place was assessed at one twenty five. So you can see one twenty five. Their new taxes, don't forget the school tax, so if you had the school tax rebate, you would take fifteen hundred dollars off there. So you get three eighty nine, the new way you would be charged, your general taxation is lower at two thousand eight hundred seventy six. But your new taxes, oh, sorry, the wrong, the wrong one, you're. You're thirty two forty five, then your new tax is. Twenty three ninety seven, then you've gotta pay the special service levy like everybody else is paying equally. So your increase in your taxes is about two hundred bucks. When you look at the total number, I know it says fifty three and forty seven, so it's sort of a balance rate in the middle impact and negative. But there's like a hundred and fifty. But there's like a hundred and fifty. Residents that are gonna see less than a hundred dollars change on both sides. On both sides. So if somebody, you know, in a new subdivision's got a five hundred thousand dollar home. Then they might see a thirteen or fourteen hundred dollar increase to their taxes. And if you see somebody in a twenty thousand dollar assessed home. They might see fourteen hundred dollars of taxes. But the whole idea of the, the reason why, and this is what council talked about, is the reason why. This is a service that it, it's independent of where you live. And I think that we have to also remember that we can't judge. We can't judge what we believe somebody's work or wealth or whatever based on what they do. That has no relevance in what. There could be people that are in expensive homes and maybe struggling, it could be people. Less expensive homes, lesser assessed homes that are struggling, and it could be more adults too. Somebody could be doing really well, something. It's their another style choice. Everybody understand that? So when you, we threw the comparisons and you can see. The town, uh, if you look at Swan River, their special service levy, three fifteen for R C P. Their R C P costs are eight hundred and sixty bucks, or eight hundred and sixty thousand yen. Our cost. Three point two million dollars. Three times as much, that's why I love these three times as much. That's important. If you look at Flimflam, they've got fire, protective service, recreation, snow removal, dust control. You know, Thompson. Captures water breaks, but I think they're actually putting, maybe putting something else through right now, I can't remember. So that's sort of where. Everything looks in our area. Again. We'll put this stuff on, online, uh, open for everybody to look at. As I mentioned, just as a quick summary, is uh. As a quick summary, so the change that you've seen this time versus last time. Is that last time, we included all roll number, vacant lots, uh, every single exempt properties, everything. And that's why the number you see a thousand dollars and fifty six thousand fifty six is higher this time. Last time it was lower because it was more properties that distributed to. There was more people paying taxes, a bigger proportion of taxes. That's a significant change that we've seen, so, and at that time, there was seventeen hundred and fifteen properties actually, and today there's sixteen hundred. Uh, fifty. So that's sort of uh, just to give you a general idea of what it is. That's our own.
Just a reminder, this is a, like an open house, uh, nothing's finding, yeah, things may change, may not. Uh, but in the fall, like it's October, we're having mandated a public hearing.
Yeah.
At that point there, people that object in writing. Same thing as was years ago. You have twenty five people that in their blog, their objection, then goes to municipal board, town council has nothing to do with that. They give the okay or thumbs up or thumbs down. That'd be in October, be well.
Yeah, no, so this is a, council offers, uh, absolutely right, just a sort of summary, so what our plan is going forward. And this is a process, guys, this is not personal, this is not, we're not trying to do anything, this is, we're following what our legislative. Allowances are within the municipal act, and and we want you, if you object, object, please. Uh, but we're not telling you to not do, to that, you know, direct to Kool-Aid, if you, you've got problems with it, please. Please object and let's follow through the process.
Andre, just a question.
Let me go through this real quick, Roy. So just so everybody knows what's going on, so on. September twenty sixth, we'll hold an official public hearing. So that's outside of this, this is where. You can come and do the same thing, we'll have it at five o'clock, you can come, you can ask questions, share your concerns, uh, for and against, whatever happens to be. Then we'll do the first reading to get the process going. Uh, and then what'll happen is that for fourteen days after that date of the first reading, you have time to officially object. Uh, so you can. Put a statement with your objection, your name, the address you're objecting to, and sign a paper, and as uh, my friend Roy said. It would be nice if bringing in a paper, if it could get snapped, received, so there's, there's a kid, there's an acknowledgement that this is received, so. The twenty five. So we, we know, we don't get a twenty four or three people brought in and then nobody handed it in, so that's, that's not a problem. So after that, uh, then after the fourteen days, then uh, the objection period ends on the sixth. What we have to do then is, if there's, if people objected twenty five, we just take our information, send it to the board. And the province will come back. If there's not an objection, and council decides to pass the second and third reading by voting on it in a public. Matter at our meetings, then what we do is that once that's been devoted on as an actual, um. Bylaw resolution or a new bylaw, we send it to the municipal board. Assessment project, they, they will review it all to make sure, yeah, you can do this or you can't do this. If it's not, it doesn't automatically get rubber stamped by council.
Just a, just a comment, I think if there is enough objections. My experience from the R M, I was spoke to municipal board, then they hold.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Municipal board chaired by them.
Yeah.
Did he? We discussed it again, have another conversation, or listen to the people again, and then they.
Yeah.
Actually, that process may take three or four months.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess what I was trying to say is, it's out of the municipality sounds that say the positive municipal board, that they do their thing, right, the general?
Yeah, uh, our property, there's four of us in there, been uh. Devalued because of lack of services. So we're going on. What we're paying on now, not because it's been devalued, because we don't have the services. It's not like living in town. I live in town, but I I have my own service. But it's not like living in town where you have all the services and your property has never been upgraded. Where we live, it's been devalued because you go to sell a property there, you know yourself, if you don't have water, town water and sewer, you're gonna get less money.
So right now, however it would work, Roy, uh, and please somebody jump in if I'm wrong, but however it works is uh. Whatever your assessed value is from the assessment branch today, that's how it would be applied. If you believe that your property is assessed too high. Based on all the reasons that you just provided. Then when October comes around for the border revision, you should bring that forward and.
Honestly, if we challenge it because it's too high, they lowered it, you offer a call during service levy.
No.
Well, yeah, because of my property's value lower, because I don't have water, sewer, or fire protection. I pay a heavier levy. No, yes, I do. Better check your math.
How you pay a higher rate?
Okay, my house, say, it's a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Not on a special service levy, on a, on a taxation?
No, on a special levy, I pay more. Because.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, you're right, no, you're absolutely right.
So what do I do? What do we do? Put in a letter, we want water, sewer, fire protection.
Absolutely, well, you have.
We're not gonna get it, we didn't get it for four, three years.
Yeah, fire protection.
I do like hell, I got limited.
Uh, well.
It costs me a hundred dollars a year more.
I don't know how it works with the.
Well, I'll tell you, that's how it works.
Yeah. No, here, yeah, so that's how, you're right, Roy, if you actually reduced it. On the levy part, you would pay more because your assessed value would go down, if it goes down below, it increases, but again. We believe, and that's what council believes, is that the R C P response to every address, like. Doesn't depend where you live.
Just in Roy's case, there. Assessments were down. Overall taxation of that property could go down and be topped up, could be washed.
Oh, I know, well, that's what I was bringing back to you, this is what I. He's right, if his property goes down. His taxation potentially would go up based on the fact that, but if you look at. If I, if he turned it down to seventy, say you're at a hundred and twenty five and he moved it to a hundred. Your general taxation would drop from twenty three ninety seven to nineteen hundred. But then you would end up having to pay a little bit more for the special service activities, everybody's paying the same amount of money.
So you're, you're still getting screwed now, you offer. So what do you do?
Ask for kids. Well, I don't, I don't.
Move, move, move further into town by something to get it, or what?
Well, no, I, I, but I, I think it, the thing is, uh, uh, Roy, it was the, it's not so much the fact that. We're trying to screw people, what we're trying to say is that your fair payment. Of R C P should be equal for everybody.
How much is everybody that owns a house?
Yeah.
How, how many hours?
What?
It doesn't prove work.
Well, apartments are assessed differently, and they're assessed on assessed value, they play a pretty significant amount out. Uh, Brian, so if you look at their role assessments, it's, it's pretty significant. You know, we did look at, we did look at saying, well, they applied it to every door or a special setting. And then I think what ends up doing, you end up hurting yourself at the park, because if you're talking or trying to develop. And and one of the problems we're having, we go home to native residents and all that, and we do something where it has such a negative in that, that taxation. I, I don't think that's the right approach, but I do believe there's other ways of actually. There could be other ways to capture some of that.
There's just the issue of the quality of it, probably quality of just. So equals in every person.
Yeah.
We get an apartment that doesn't affect anything.
Yeah, and our apartment owner pays twenty thousand dollars in taxes. Um, you know, if we get, so we apply the special service levy, you know, we're gonna apply it if they seven thousand dollars in their taxes.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be for.
Yeah, it would sort of kill your.
So it's not equal to everybody, you know, we're talking with president.
Well, it's equal to residential, it's equal to residential housing, it's not equal to, we're not applying faulty units and, and we're not. Buying commercial, we're not applying exempt. So that's, that's, when you look at the way commercial that's going, we, there's a significant taxation tax effect on that already. And that by applying something like this, we really struggle with commercial, how we would buy it sometimes. Uh, there's no ways of, this is the word itself, well.
Yeah, I already seen both everybody. Well, those who own a house, it was sixty hundred.
It's equal to the house, it's like both home, 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 yeah.
You're right, it's, it's equal to home.
But I've got, got two questions actually, uh. One, like with the heavy buildings that are. Quite a drop, say, they grant. That just. Has there ever been the updated? Um, percentages that they paid over the past several years, which you. With, um. The fact our C N B bus or long.
Yeah. We're, we are actually writing that separately. I'm sure if we look at the, how we apply to, to the housing. And what we, or the wheelhouse of here, that we could apply a special rate to certain. Uh, residential or serving areas of town by supplying their glasses. So there is some work being done on that, but right now, no one's trying to do it.
And then my second question would be, is, um, since this year in particular, whatever with all the fires, one thing, other. Uh, there has been a lot of person, there would be presence. That blocking cold, but there's a part of that are controlled, for example, uh. Into the bush, the, stuff like that, but I'm hoping that it beats the problems is. It's covering those laws and that that just take off the.
Yeah.
Municipal. Or whether.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what, so when, when they. Anything that's outside or. Uh, specific town of the, sort of policing, yes, yes. Removed the, the employees. So such as if they were responding to the calls. Uh, perhaps that, under supporting it for a couple of weeks. On, those officers would be charged to, on this.
And on the ground, so there's game over.
Yeah, so you know, and I look at our fire department guys, they've done a great job over the last while. Some of that work that they've done as well, uh, that submitted. In conjunction with the guard now, as their support, as a bill to say, hey, this is. Part of well-lived fires, we're supporting the government. You know, we, we, we gave on some of it, where that's the rental equipment, labor, and institutions, occupy place. Is that, occupy place? Oh, hi. Yeah, so. So yeah, so as I say, we, the fire department, like, you know, some of the things like Bruce brought up about the R C P. You know, the R C P only, only invoices us for R C P work that's done in town and. What's needed to your hours to get to here, it's a very detailed invoice that our controller goes through every quarter. I would get invoice quarterly, and then, as I mentioned, the, uh, the, uh. The fire dump just happened, there's been a lot of that work, uh, and and even some of the work that guys like Sam and and Bola have done. Uh, supportive with evacuation and stuff. Gets submitted to the government through the emergency recovery fund or. Yeah.
D F D.
Yeah. Disaster fund recovery or something.
Yes.
Yeah, that, yeah, and then, and then so it's. We hope that will. Get some returns with that.
Andre, have you done a, a survey to see what the street people actually cost R C P wise? How many hours you spent there?
Yeah, no, and it's, we know that there's a lot of, uh, of that, any crime going on, and. That's why we actually have, uh, hired for this municipality, uh, three C S Os. Uh, that's a three hundred thousand dollar impact on the municipality. Um, we do know that, but there's, it's not a simple R C P rest of out of it, it's, there's a lot of other. Issues that go along with that, uh, the R C P work very closely with our C S Os. And, you know, to me, and mental health association, very adjacent. So yes, they, we do, no one, if you watch our, our council meetings, you can kind of. Read between the lines where you see the reports, the R C P reports, um, that, um, they are, uh. You'll sort of see where most of the activity is, uh, uh, where the hotspots are down, obviously, everybody knows it's downtown. Uh, down the streets and stuff. Just one note though, and I know council hasn't seen the agenda yet, but I did issue, uh, put an issue sheet in at, at the top of the meeting. So I, I hope that council supports it next week, uh, kind of putting it in one spot, but we will have, uh, it's safe to some sort of thing to. To get some feedback.
Uh, my good comment, I just, I'd like to commend the council on, on what you're doing here. I think it's very proactive and progressive thing. And I think the big thing is, this is not a mission of discovery, lots of new similarities across the province. Are using this as tax management tool.
Yes.
And. It's nice to see you broken out, there's good detail here, and I think, uh, it's something that is going to be very, just supposed to move forward by. By, by compliment, uh, and and I know it's a side note, but I hope. On the policy side, when you spoke earlier about the A M M, A M M policies, since you're pushing forward. It'll demand some of the taxes, we have. The very limited tax to work with, but this is, it's got something that's got a lot of them, right? So, uh. It's a challenge, and I don't, you want to comment or some of the work at A M M?
No, but with some of the tax stuff that's going on with A M M, really, the, the big thing that changes is it puts the. What's the authority of the municipality to do the work, what they think is necessary for the municipality? All of this. All of this other stuff that's going on, that we have to do forty days, submit this, do this, do this. That, that would be streamlined a lot, uh, and what we could. As long as we have good reasons for, there should be a flat tat of exit owners on all properties in town, and then from there, you go on and assess values, so. You know, as, as, you know, if you said, there's things, I'm not saying this is what we would do, but you could do every single roll number is a thousand bucks. Whatever money you generate from there. Then you subtract that from the total budget, and that's what you can go do to, if you, uh, low rate applied to, to, so that's the thing to think.
This one, I think, that's just, you agree that. Hey, well, you know. Not, darn it, tell us. Well, every. Side of the town, five, six, seven, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Pretty well, that service, not a different single, to help me as the camp, to slap them. But here, and it, we're having. Well, see, I think that, I remember, but. Just like, like.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, you know, like, I think we're. Pretty well there now, um, there is, this is, this isn't the end. Um, there's still gonna be lots of opportunities for people to see. We wanted to have sort of an informal way, we heard what you said last time, it's easier for us to have these kind of discussions with this forum to be open. And, uh, and again, follow the process. Uh, like I said, we will put this online, if you have questions. Anytime, call the office, uh, you know, Laura's there, Bola's there, Sam's there, Tambeer, they completely understand what's, what's going on. Uh, is it perfect? I don't know, it, I think it's better than when it was, um, is it changed? Yeah, is it hard to swallow sometimes? Yeah, it's something new, uh, but. As, uh, Jim and, and Rod had mentioned, this is a big process, we're not, we're not breaking, we're not. We're not breaking trail here, this is induced, there's many things, municipalities and. Hopefully, uh. The other thing to keep in mind, the bylaws only, I think we were, council manager, we said three years? So it's three years, so in three years, you get to do it all over again, so if it didn't work, and it's, didn't. Create the thing you would, you get five years? Right, five years, anyways, there's a, there's a, there's a, I asked her five, but I thought we were going for three, but whatever it is, there's a, there's a. Okay, there's a, there's a deadline. There's a, there's an end date on.
Are we getting copies of this?
Uh, not tonight, but I can, I have one if somebody wants.
Uh, well, if you have them at the town, I have something to pick them up later.
I have one here, but there's just one, one.
Okay, if you make.
You want this, Roy?
No, that's okay, it's been upgraded. Oh, let it go with that.
Yeah.
You'll have copies available at the front desk of the town.
Yeah. Okay, well, once again, thanks, everybody, if there's no other questions, I appreciate everybody's time, like you said, we're trying to be. Uh, as clear as possible with it, and, uh, as always, uh. Give us a call, call when your counselors, I'm sure that they will love the time.
Do you need to get a letter or it might still stand?
Yeah, so if you haven't, this is a new process, the last one was defeated, so you have to resubmit again. If you're object. Yes, okay. And we will talk to Bola, can talk to the front staff, the staff will receive by, and so that. We can, everybody goes back and see if it's true.
And we can do this by petition as well, I was told that the last time around, instead of every individual signing a letter of objection. You can do one format. Uh, with objection and get, uh, people to sign.
Yeah, I, I, that's, I don't know that also, if that's okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
I, I was in.
We're not, we're not discour, we're, we're hoping people see what we see, uh, but we're not discouraging people to. That's part of the process, and I'll go through it.
Lots of coffee and.
Yeah, lots of coffee, donuts.
Lots of smoke and.
Thanks for everybody's time, we appreciate everybody coming out.